Stand with our delegates. How many would you use? How do you have the status for that?
Senator Republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, without any bounds.
Paul Johnson. There's sense.
Yeah.
There is a decision here. Um, short order at seven P M. The Luminina Act is on the South Mall for Europe Union in Jordan. There is a copy of the City Council Packet, um, council chambers located in the center near the Cockpit Water. This needs to be left by the entry per the Over Meeting Act. Thinking, this to give grant by, or we did, well, the mayor and the city council reserve the right to enter into closed section at any time during the meeting. In accordance with the Nebraska Over Meeting Act, even though it may not be on the agenda. It is the intention of the mayor and the city council to take up items on the agenda in order presented, however. We reserve the right to take up matters in a different order, accommodate schedules of the city council members having. Um, and the city councils, where there was a right to just order of the items on the agenda. Anyone wishing to speak during public comment may be limited to three minutes with a limit of two individuals speaking per topic position. Please come to the podium and finally take your main address for the record. And the agenda topic item you wish to speak. Right, everyone had a chance to review.
Move to accept the agenda for June eleventh, twenty twenty four.
Kimberly moved and turned the second to accept the agenda for June eleventh, twenty twenty four. Any discussion? Andrea, how do you feel?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Turn.
Yes.
Come on.
Yes.
Motion carry. Review and action of prior meeting minutes, May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four.
And then to accept one.
May twenty eighth, twenty four, meeting minutes, and away the review.
Sorry.
Andrew moves down second to accept the higher meeting minutes for May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, and away the review. Any discussion? Turn. You know, yes. Yeah.
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Motion. Communications, dear Edward.
Wait, can I get up, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Um, absolutely, yes, so. See communications and I do meeting updates here. Um, seems like this time of year ninety nine point nine percent of everything is part of rec. Which is fine, we love the hot season. Um, ball season is, is, uh, going smoothly, about twelve games left this year, home games left this year. Um, we did have to warranty the wireless antennas for the new scoreboards, thank for the warranty. And those issues resolved now, I got the new dugouts, I think, please kind of the benches, they should be here around. June sixteenth, somewhere around there, um, you've noticed their bench were missing out here, we did steal from where we could. With the downtown benches down there, and honestly, I think they look pretty, you know, dugouts. And, and they're that, I think, it's like an antiquey feel to them all those, so. But we do have actual benches coming for them. We hosted the, uh, Oakley Memorial Tournament. Uh, this year, and then we just finished hosting a two day Woodback Tournament. Well, mostly it's funny age cats, and then, uh, we lived at his pony on E V H. Uh, kids, so that's, uh, the Oakley is put out by Chris Friesick. And, uh, a Woodback Tournament is supposed to buy Vic, you know, coordination and everything, we just have concessions available for.
Oh, great.
So, which is great, because it takes a lot of grit, that, you know, man, it's like does all the planning and the scheduling and. They have, they provide all their own empires and everything.
Oh, thanks.
Good. Um, we just finished hosting our home swim meet. Um, I was not there, but from what I heard, it went very well. Um, you then, we found out that we will be hosting a state qualifying meet. On July sixth. And Imperial was the host site for the championship this year. I was able to speak with the director of the High Plains Synonym League, Jeff. And he's hoping that they can alternate between east and west sites annually for the championship.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and said, wow, we're, we want to crack at it, so. And I think that's, he, he said, yeah, we, we, we've already allowed the glare, so. Uh, hopefully we get a crack at it in two years, because it'll go back east next year, I think it'd been in Oxford. Prior to coming wests.
Right, and how many towns does that?
Um. Well, there'll be plus, there'll be one more than we had at the swimming, so seven, I think is. With the, the, you know, Patrick's little.
Oh, nice.
So, yeah, very, very good, and then, I mean, they're done by twelve thirty. The kids go, and when we start to eat, that's July opening, like, cool. I mean, it ran very, very, because you think they're gonna be able to start about a half, earlier, because the July sixth will be, it'll be hard. Um. All right, uh, pool hosted, yep, okay, uh, so it's in contact with Sheldon. Um, we're trying to set up the dates for crack sealing and patching, as we normally do with Mr. Geesburg. Um. Flag day is on Friday, just a reminder there, we'll have flags up for that. Um, and if you notice, we did get our handicap, uh, sign posts. Uh, Mr. Favor is working on getting the signs paid for those stalls.
All right.
With the, it gets a little easier to see, if it's on, if it's on a pole rather than on the concretes.
Yeah.
Um, and, and as far as echo striping is in the works, we're, we're. Uh, those who were working with a new individual did not, was not impressed with the ones we hired last year, so. And so, to us, I gave him a kind line of before our break.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know.
I mean.
Um, so, uh, data system, if you recall, we approved that, um, I did message, um, Amos. Uh, to get an update on that, and so hopefully they'll be able to begin it ahead of this month. On updating our status system, the status system is what monitors our wells, our water tower, and our stations. It tells us how long the brand, which one's the lead, it's our, it's the brains of the water and the system.
And then like if one is running too much, that'll alert you.
Yep, it does an auto dialer, we work with, like, briefly, for, for states communications. Um, suppose there's an alarm that gets set off on a water alarm on the station, or water alarm on the water tower, this is how it will now.
Okay.
Then, uh, it's off. Um. The guys are working on some repairs at the band show, they did get the steps repaired to the band show, and. Uh, I contracted with Daniel Coney to paint the interior of the band show. The white part, before our army band comes on July twelfth. So, I'm worried about posting them. Um. Okay, uh, well, quickly here, tomorrow, the library board will meet, that is, uh, June twelfth. Uh, at five fifteen over at the library, five fifteen P M. P M. Um. Jessie will be going to Municipal Financing, or sorry, I butchered that, Jessie, Municipal Accounting and Financing. School class, I butchered it, I'm sorry. Um, and she will be gone Thursday, Fridays, I'm excited.
Yeah.
Come back on Friday. Um, and then that will take us to Tuesday, June eighteenth, we will have our joint special meeting. Uh, with the library at six P M in this room. We are closed in observance of Juneteenth on the nineteenth. And then I am at the Nebraska City Managers Annual Conference in York, the board will meet. June twentieth. At two P M. I will say that's still tentative right now, Mr. Forney was gonna get back to me, and he hasn't yet, so. But for now, it is, is in the calendar for June twentieth, two P M. And then up to our next meeting, uh, city council on the twenty fifth. Once.
What were the days you were talking in?
Uh, the twentieth and twenty first. And we are, they're looking for another public works employee, so if you know someone, send them our way. Yeah. Right, I got your posted on all of the sites that we can post on, send the minutes to T County. Free, free area newspaper, D V Zip Recruiter, anywhere, so, all of the above, I, anything that'll let me post a job, Facebook.
Perfect. All right, thank you very much for that information, Ann Card, do you have anything? Oh, yeah, it is seven ten, thank you. So, let's go into the public hearing on the Bishop's subdivision, and when our flat at seven ten, thank you so much. And that.
In your, in your packet, uh, supposedly would have got standing Canadian reports, we would have, we would have had them again. Um.
I did the last time.
Right, right, but, uh. In your packet is the, uh, preliminary flat, um, I have included the big map, and I showed you guys last time. It's on the back table, it looks as well, um, there were some minor revisions in there, um. They, they wanted, uh, Mr. Softley to ask for an easement or an access easement.
Yeah, just a minute, sorry. Mr. Wang, would you please put the binder over here? Sorry. There's other people here that may want to turn me up. Thank you.
No, no worries, oh, yeah, so, Mr. Softman, my knee has to wear that day, and, uh, you know, sorry hat on. Which is great, well, we need that hat on, um, and he had asked us for a need for along the north side of the lot lines, um, for urgency access, and the bishops obliged, uh. There was no issue there, I did receive notice after, uh. After that meeting from Jason, if they were going to be able to make changes, they would like the Bishop's Avenue removed. Straightened after that, so, uh, we're gonna go back to the original one from Mr. Poppy, uh, Pearl Avenue. Um, no baby there, as well as removing the street, uh, utility, and changing it to a utility access, he's meant on the E six. Uh, to the south of, uh. Again, that is an emergency vehicle, and it's only access, uh, and that's largely a place there because of existing trees, and the desire to keep those, they're. Really good condition. Quite a nice break, which means those two properties. I think the only changes there were, were those two changes, were those change that I submitted. Um, in the, in the rest of the files, you can see all the stuff I have to get, and our style of preparing, I have the sewer, the water, elevation. And then, as well as I also included the fiber layout, um, and the light layout, and like, the vehicle all being put on a fish. Uh, map, around these, urgency locations. Being caught up, we're not able to get our tunes made, will not hold up the preliminary process, which is pretty good tonight, as.
Thanks.
Sorry that I couldn't. So, um.
It was enough.
It was in there, and I just scanned it, and I copied it to them today, and. That means it's forty feet, is that right? On the north side of.
Thirty plus the existing ten on the lot.
So, yeah.
Um, was also, I had a very nice conversation through the new, uh, G Risha. We made my, she's, I said, thank you. For progress, they're excited, they had a lot of people knocking on the doors, just the lots that did. Facebooks, they had people saying, purchase a lot, we're ready, so that's, that's great, um. Saw James one hit. For the waters and sewer main, and the oxygen board, gas all day. Uh, the electrical, we got that last, it's about communications, so we got for drink planes, gas, we got for glaciers, that goes, did. Needs to be did. So, and then, I'm hoping this area will be June twenty fifth, I don't have enough response. I'll need a clear, uh, to award the, the whole. Because they are, they, they have word, they, we should draw on.
Hmm.
Hopefully, after you have, after information, the construction estimates, uh, includes, you start talking about, uh, pricing. Uh, which, the lots. They potentially sell for, so. Let's, let's get rid of this, she's, I had a very big meeting with her, excited to, to talk with her, she. She very pleased, we thought we had drawn this, excited to draw, carry the wheels, goes.
All right. Donna, you wanna come on up here and to the podium? Well, I just wondered if they even. Picture the flat. For me. Cause I'm worried, like. Good question. Yep, well, what, Donna, did you have a question, or you just wanted to talk?
Right now, I like.
I mean, go ahead, and, and have a seat, have a sit, gloves.
Right.
Go ahead, so, um, you wanna go ahead and come up to the podium and introduce yourself and so on?
And we're also, I guess, like, oh. I'm hopeful, Lord, sister. Uh, it is actually. The East End will take it to. About the four or eight, four feet south of East Street. So. Maybe it's on a spot, we're gonna keep the best note of play, I know it's a little.
Well, good question, thank you for bringing that up.
Box number, that, that'll drive, it's, probably, three, two rods, those three are available for multi-tenant houses. That's all, so. Single, like, the, the intention was to destroy this. This is, that's. Off, this.
Like, more base. So, oh, sees from tile, like, general things will block.
Six. It's in searches. I should, we're, right, the various venues. Uh, that was. Question, question, size, those considerable car, since. A sex guide, what, when six was, with a single car haulage, each of those lots. Uh, this is just, it's for eighteen, they, they script it. So, which is, well. The, so it's had.
Very, at least, I hear that.
Seventeen thousand, we can't really know, so that was twenty nine. Well.
Should. Can't count, they chose. Able to stake a.
Well, yeah.
It's, it's my residence, no.
Great, we have four of us.
Or some of us. So, of course. One of their. So.
Still, we, this word, why, was available to how it's been, that, I didn't. We're on the certain levels. It's both.
You can't find.
Point from May to the south.
Yes, spoke, maybe. Everybody's lot, your service, their house. Yes.
Did you guys hear the question?
So she was carrying on the water main and sewer main, spoke. Sister main. It's possible connection to the smart, to the water, thanks.
Good question.
Where's your pen, just, you can't do this.
So two entrances here off of Fourth Street.
Off of what?
Fourth Street, so you've got the Grace, got no hole locks, and then Carl Lakes isn't right here, so either off of Fourth Street. Or off of Eighth Street, and L.
Take the L off of the L, what, what is it, uh, transition, L and S.
Here.
Around L.
Inside living now.
Okay, around L, and then you return. Where is it, can turn from the street, definitely. Turn right.
And seven will be open too, and that's where our eight streets, I'm just, maybe, you know.
Right, and then you'll have a straight here with seventh. I believe we'll come from the seventh straight, we'll.
Okay, happy.
Um, this is Mr. Bishop's property, um, and. Not a particular lawn, he is one point, one and a half acres.
So this is. He still owns, for the year.
Yes, he, he, he's going to continue to own all of the property, he's just allowing us to bring the utility, the water main and the sewer main through his property to get to ours.
That's typical, so we are able to. Gain, think, from the tip, and help pay for each.
Yep, it's deferred taxes, so we have fifteen years, defer a certain amount of taxes to recoup what it costs us to build the utilities. So, uh, the big thing here was by allowing them to come from a, um, uh. So there, right here at the corner of Elm and E, there's a water main and a sewer main. And by coming this direction, it's gonna save us almost forty thousand dollars, rather than bringing in utilities down Fourth Street. Well, that would be a big push to get utilities coming through Mr. Bishop's property, I'll slide this up here, I'll show you the break, we actually. Everything, sorry, everything above the pin is Mr. Bishop's, and everything below the pin is the, the community redevelopment authority, the C R A.
Small.
That, but there's, yeah, there's just this.
I am a small, yeah, hopefully, we're here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
First, I see one, it is one eight, you know, it's research, well, I don't know, it's. That's it.
You're, you're welcome to that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I decided I'd just ask questions, they had a time.
Come ask questions, that's what the public hearing is for, question time.
Bill, did you have any more questions?
I do the one, one, one each.
Yeah, cause this is just the first of.
Right. I'll, I'll talk with them, I was, uh. Just, thanks, cleared on, I guess the main thing is, street that goes by Gardner's, that's not gonna be affected, yeah. Don't just let me show.
It's, well, partner, at least across the street, may.
Right.
Right. Thanks. Do you have any questions, Lauren? Thank you, you're welcome. How long it's been? Thirteen hours. Yes, no, no, two more minutes. Right?
The president called up.
Yeah, thirteen minutes.
So, we'll, we'll stick to the precedent you already said.
Yeah, yeah. Robert, you guys, any, any questions, or? Is there?
Um, really excited we're able to do it. It'd be here.
Yeah.
It's amazing how long it takes to get all this stuff kind of done, but, and I think there's no, we are able to do it with, with private. Well, I think a lot of city would not do that, so we're able to work together, save a lot of money, and save the taxpayer a lot of money if they come to the park.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, it's one need that has been communicated from the citizens that may, like.
Yeah.
For that.
No matter how many surveys have been done over the last ten years.
Well, I, hasn't been, longer than that?
Yes, at least ten that I've been, keeping track of from every forum, that's been, so.
And we know that there's a, you know that there's a, I mean, here are the two, two additions, a- again, I don't like to compare to those communities, because they're not comparable to us. Yes, they're our neighbors, but they have a much larger tax base than we do, uh. But, for instance, Trenton has a much smaller tax base than we do, uh, they flourish, they just have a brand new addition out of the.
That's on the lake.
Mm-hmm. And, and it's still on my gangbusters cabin, obviously. We know that with the incoming Western Sky, we need someone, somewhere for those employees to go, we need somewhere for our teachers to go. Ogallala is gonna get a casino, playing example, it's actually racing, I think is what they called it.
Oh, that's, that's.
It's, it's not happened.
Right.
The opening, the dying timeline, of yes, it's been determined, so. We, I would like to capture the fallout from that, you know, and, and the people in S room about being Ogallala, I'm on down the, I'm on down the ground, we got a sixty inch place to do that. And, and obviously, we know if you take a cruise through the hospital, it's not seventy-four up there, it's predominant. Uh, it's all the other, it's all the outline communities, and it's predominant up there, we, we can be dirt ready. For the infrastructure, sewer main, water main, electric, fiber, fellow communications, gas, and just have a lot ready for someone to come in and then work on. For workforce housing, and actually building some properties, there's a developer. In, in Imperial right now, but he's excited about us, because I think he, you know, a lot of chances, they're, uh. There's, yeah, so, I'm hoping that, uh, just by having third box, you know, English ready, box for sale, we can capture some of this room, and. Can be hidden, now on the head there, we, it's the survey you've ever asked in the last seventeen years, it's been, you know, we get housing. We're no longer dragging the feet, we're, we're gonna make this happen, and you can't, we can't, we can't, we can't make available in there.
Well, I had, I, I went to cook retreat in Florin, a couple months ago, and one of the ladies there. Who wants to get out of the front range, and was looking at houses in Grant, Imperial, and Hualoa. She, and she eliminated Ogallala, I don't know what reason, but she did, and, you know, right there, had we had housing, I, you know. Yeah, you know, and, and she has quite the chunk to plump down, had we been ready, you know, she would be moving here.
I have, I have an instinct there too, when Jeannie Dyson used to give me reports from the front range, and from her travels, and she said, there's just an overwhelming amount of people. People from California that just. Tore up the front range, and it's no longer the beauty that it was, especially the mountain backdrop, so. Yeah, we, we don't have all the legalization that Colorado does, but that's a good thing too.
Okay, yeah, so, so, some good examples of, of why we're doing that, doing this, it was started before us, obviously, um. So, I feel glad we can continue that work. All right, does our public have any more questions? Or comment? This is a good place to, to put them, because we're all together, so we can talk to it all at the same time.
I think North Platte's gonna be able to, Ogallala.
I don't, don't wanna, wanna correct Phil. I know. Seems my elder, but North Platte turned it down. At their last, yeah, within the last two or three meetings, they turned it down. Because of, uh, sustainable beef, and because of what they're doing downtown, was the district one seven, also, but, um.
What's for to build, I mean, what's gonna be the price of these houses, that people gonna be able to afford it? I guess that's my, my question.
That's yet, yet to be seen, I mean, I, like I said, if we can just have, um, there are lots for sale, I think that's the biggest part, affordable, lots for sale. That's the biggest part, now whether the house itself is actually affordable, I can't control, uh, I will tell you right now that. It's not, I mean, we can't afford to build a four hundred thousand dollar home and live in it. But, but I, I think the interest rates aren't going anywhere, we got less than a while back, two and three percent interest rates, and won't see those fly again, so. So, yeah, affordability will be key, if anyone can actually build a home.
It is now seven twenty nine. It is now seven twenty-nine, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Thank you for participating. And we will go up to standing committee reports, Andrea.
Cemetery met tonight, I would like to ask girls to hold.
Okay, very good, yeah, Marley?
Um, nothing new from the last meeting.
Okay, Karen? And Seven.
All right. We did have enforcement, sheriff, water, with more.
Mayor, I did forget to mention, I'm a full advisor in my communications, there's public school and lessons, and I have, I don't know, yeah, I'm going on this weekend.
Okay.
You were not through one, I think, said she has eleven.
One more.
Or more, there was some walk-ins, she had eleven pre-registered, I mean, there's always some walk-ins, so, but that is this week. And then the second one, we're shooting for the, uh, the second week in July, um, the eighth through the twelfth, but that's sensitive rights, so. Hopefully, they'll not, they'll.
Thank you. It was the twenty-second, she didn't sign that up, so.
Yes, sorry.
We were doing it.
We're doing it after, that's what, okay, thank you.
All right, thank you for that update. All right, enforcement, sheriff, water. Uh, please note that we accept them as presented. Any financials, they're in process, and we'll follow to. Any, any public comments? Go ahead and join us up at the, how do you, and can state what you.
Mine is true. No calling to live at Jake's Land. As we know, the Fourth of July is coming up, and our streets look raggy. There's weeds, we're not, we're not killing the weeds on the street, and it's making our community look pretty bad. And Gary Becker was here, and Dave Daley, they sprayed the streets all the time, and they kept the weeds out. And I think that suddenly should be brought up.
All right.
Number two, I talked with him about this, and I still complain, that grass pile we have out there, you go out and get to grass, and it sticks, and it's with you all day long, and that should be empty a lot, I've talked with him, but that truck's set out there for five days, nothing's been done. And one other thing, I don't, are hours six to two? I think it should be seven to four or eight to five, six to two is ridiculous. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Phil.
I won't say anymore.
All right.
Um, there is something, just, basically, we're asking touch for that to come on. About the, um, ball fields and the bathrooms, and so, um, felt like they were, they were clean during the tournament, and people were having to bring their own toilet paper from home, um, so I just came, like, way back to town, I just crewed over there to see them, I realized we had two toilets and that whole thing, so I understand why it's a, and decided to expand that thing, but it was dirty and it wasn't toilet paper, but there was, um, hand sanitizer bolt, so I speak to them to just today, and, um, but it's a concern, especially we do do tournaments and that kind of stuff, that was one of the concerns, like, people, it's like, they represent the town, and I don't know, I know at one point we mentioned having pork potties or something out there, or additional, I asked for some solutions, but they thought we should do, um, obviously, we have this, we are owning the property, we lease the property, maybe we're discussing, so, um, some of that was my things I could spend on that I shared, and that's something we're looking into, I wasn't sure if we could open up the fair area for bathrooms, but then somebody has to maintain those. I was trying to come up with solutions that maybe we, we can do, but I, if people are bringing their own toilet paper from home, so people can have toilet paper to use, I mean, and, and one of the things that actually was offered was they, uh, people said that they could, felt like they could get a bunch of volunteers that could come out and clean the place, and, and that's free, and people care about the community, and, um, if it, if that's the least that happens, you know, if somebody comes before tournaments, we have community members coming to clean the bathrooms or bring a toilet paper, um, and, and cleaning afterwards, I think that's, you know, people really care about it, and so. What I, what the point is, there's some concerns, but they also offer, so I, I, very reasonable solution.
Yeah, that's good. Right.
I guess on that, I'm curious, we have like a lot of young employees this season who apply for lifeguard, and we have new regulations regarding hours that they can work, depending on their age. Wondering if we've considered for the city, given that we're now down an employee, the summer months are definitely more difficult for the city with waste removal, weed cleanup, bathrooms, can we think about some opportunities for part-time employment that are not lifeguard or necessarily sports related, that our young kids might, might worry of being part of dog shadowing, community reverse? If that's something that might be.
Yeah, so that, that's, I was thinking outside of law, yeah.
I just think, like, local jobs are tough for young kids, I think that's something that is not necessarily high skill need, that is hours and time and commitment, and pay that we obviously struggle to, to find full-time employment, so maybe in the summer, we can consider some part-time opportunities for younger, in case. I'll listen to the summer.
Yeah, yeah, wanna look into that? Okay, thank you.
Well, can I ask, that seat up there is for, I can't remember, what's, is that gonna face the back fence?
It's just.
The fence is laying on the ground out there, is that gonna face the back fence, I can't remember what it's for.
No, the fence, the remainder of that fence will be used to replace the fence that's purling, uh, in the yard, you still.
Okay, that's after the ball season, so.
Yeah.
No, I, I want to see all those.
I'm a drawn man, too.
Yes, so this, I just, just saw it and just. Okay.
Well, and maybe we're not too late yet for somewhere else. Happen. I can throw that comment, so you can take it for thought.
So, we did, I actually am researching that, um, I asked, Eric had brought to my attention that actually, he had this, I don't know, football players, ants, they probably, there's something worth, uh, he is, he's learning, we are highly too late now, but I, there, there is, he did hear, I mentioned, but I'm very thankful for a solution.
I mean, there's also, I mean, honestly, there's potential for our students throughout the year, who are not necessarily participating in sports or social activities that might be looking for employment opportunities, and we just don't have a lot of part-time stuff that's centered with the city, and they, they, typically with part-time, we don't offer benefits, which is not a problem for a student who's covered over their parents, um, maybe jobs, and they're always, they're, they're especially someone afraid that they may return back to the family, they.
Bishop, we're, we're, research coming up, right? One of the stacks that brings, he's, 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 um, they, they can't go with, so, it's, it's, just working at the park, it's, it's fine, but I don't know, we can't call them, oh.
Yeah, that's fine, I mean, to have a, we're task oriented for a couple hour day, or what?
It's just a, like, just a little thing, maybe I have to work.
Yeah, yeah.
Or like internships, bicycle. Lots of.
Yes, right.
You can tell.
Yeah.
It's, it's, yeah. So there's, there's maybe some opportunities there, you know, for, totally, just.
Yeah.
Most of your.
Yeah. Then, that, think that's. Say again, what are you talking? Yeah, yeah.
He's not, I mean, there was, I went there, I just, I went there today, and it was, you're welcome.
I went, I went.
You have to know his trash.
When you give food, it's not a spider, that's actually, if this restroom needs attention, please go find it, so.
It knows, like, yeah, I think, yeah. So, I apologize for, start on those.
We had, we had, yeah.
Lots, there's a lot of good solutions, but the.
Yeah, and I know, it's, uh, I participated in the, in the ball field in the past, but I know then you get jump involved, and the insurance thing, sometimes there's that, so.
Use the spread, you probably. It's important. Oh, spread boards, yes. Yeah, it's just like, sure, it is for.
Especially a little better idea, especially with twenty-one year, it was to like a ballpark later day, with, it's using.
Are you out of? So I do wanna help, it's, so, you know, like, yeah, it's supposed to.
Brainstorming, unless they, it's been, I've not noticed, uh, like, the no smoking, no drugs, no that type of signage, I don't, you don't allow it, but I haven't seen any signage, so I wonder if that's something we should consider, just supposed to lay clear, easily, easy gen.
Right, I think there's no consensus.
Very, I think.
We see this. We're asking, so many more.
It's not, no, I didn't, and I was like, I know it's not allowed, but I don't think I've seen a sign, so.
Say, you're parking lot? With a. It's getting, like, stupid, it's getting serious.
Well, the boundaries, yeah.
I had, yeah, you have, you have smoke on the grenades. There's, there you go, catch it.
With your toes.
Yeah, perfect. I think it'd be, self, the grounds, you know.
Signs are so creative.
All right, keep it, Travis, we're employee, right?
Very good, all right. Any more public comments, I probably have a lot of. Terry?
We're good, all right, unfinished business, action and discussion on resolution twenty-four, O five, O three, a resolution of the city grant to adopt the swimming pool personnel, and further work for help, while other those pushing to points, those movements, thank you.
So, I'm trying to, I tried to do the other highlights.
I get it, how good is speaking, why?
Some changes. So, yes, I, word stuff, I'm trying to, like. I removed the, or.
Yeah, I think.
No, that's.
No, that's, no, yeah, they're like. I don't have to. Like, trying to capture, like, I heard, that's very funny. My, one. Object, that's.
We're really making motion to approve resolution twenty-four, oh, five, oh, three, uh, resolution for city grant to formally adopt swimming pool personnel.
Okay, Kimberly move, Andrea second to approve resolution twenty-four, oh, three, adopt the, the green swimming pool personnel manual. Any discussion?
Uh, what, ask for some feedback? Control, things we had last week, that's plus, this has been, any changes? Like, were planes available?
Okay, right after the meeting, it was spaced.
Okay, there are glass swimmers up there, will be.
Actually, yesterday it was full, so, uh, it did work out really well, as the lifeguards noticed that it that it was full, um, and removed, completely removed the slide pole that sits in the middle, and then the barricades, um, and then we did have an on-duty lifeguard who was giving lessons, who asked the lane swimmers, we've got a swimmer who would like to go down the big slide at the end of his lesson, is that okay with you? So that all worked really well, but there were no, no lanes up during this.
And I, it's hard to, implementation of this, obviously, and I, I told Brittany, and I, she said, well, we will, when they at least pulled over to the deep end, where the lane rose by the deep end. Yeah.
I think the operators, from my questioning of some staff, I think the operators are aware of the rule, but I'm not sure it's like widely known, so.
One more. Thank you.
And is there a meaning for them to, like, go through the manuals so that they know what to do?
Yeah, so I, we'll talk with Brittany and see what the, so we can try and hit all the kids once, about have sixteen hundred meetings.
Yeah.
And where there's only five on the shift, and some of them on work, creates a lot of.
Yeah.
So, we will, we'll coordinate, map, this, all, if we have employees who became good for us, you'll have to have them on, so. So, healthy, busy, vacations, camps.
And she might have to, you know, or.
Right, and if we, if we have to have three or four, that's fine, I just, one, with five, and then five.
Hopefully, the remainder this week gives a good opportunity if we're able to pass it, because most of them are there for.
Brittany's seen this, how much money she has.
Yes.
So, Kimberly move, Andrea is second, any more discussion? Karen, how to go, yes, Sam, yes, Sam, Andrea, yes, motion, thank you, good discussion. Right, action and discussion on approval of the Bishop's subdivision, preliminary, so this is the, so the change you made, I'm assuming.
Which we now in the final part of the public hearing, my impression, yes, which you had to reset, we have to get changed back from the church, they didn't say, um, before the final five.
And then for the city-owned property or CRA-owned property, what is, what is the final process as far as, like, their proposal for house size, or what type of structure it plays in that space?
So the CIA's sort of last step after they approve it for construction, their next step will be, uh, pricing of square, pricing per square foot, um, and then covenants, not for that, for.
And that is?
Like you said, mobile home.
So, I guess, H layer.
Similar to, similar to the language of an H layer, yes.
So then they would make a recommendation for the covenants to the city council for final approval, or they?
No, they're, this is their property.
Draw that up.
They draw that one. This, the next step for you guys will be approval of the final class.
Which is really just the layout, it is not price per square foot, and.
No, it's, it's just confirming that, yes, this is the layout, and it will stay this way.
Okay.
Alterations from this point.
Okay.
Blends with the.
Fine, I moved, so, action, um, approval of the Bishop's subdivision, preliminary.
Sam, move, Karen is second to accept the, uh, approval of the Bishop's subdivision preliminary, uh, any more discussion? I, I did have one thing. That just occurred to me, sorry, um, you know when we put the water mains in, the, the flow of the water changed? You come into the house because they were smaller, right? You, you guys know what I'm talking about?
Yes.
So like, right now, like, I'm gonna change all my sprinklers, because the, the water pressure, it wasn't water pressure, they said it was something else, it was.
Water pressure had to change.
Our, our pressure's constantly, I guess.
Right, but I still had to change my sprinklers, like, if I run my, my wash machine, I can't run my sprinklers, where before the water meters, I can do both, are we gonna, we're not gonna put that in this new, we're, we're gonna fix that. Put that in this new, we're we're gonna fix that and put in the new subdivision.
That would be the homeowner's decision as to whether or not they want a three quarter inch line or a one inch line.
So that's what it is, isn't it?
That's right.
We will not. Homeowners decided on their.
It's lines and anything. Lot of people didn't notice a change.
I noticed to have it.
So I mean, it just, it just kinda depended on, I think. Those tell me it's worth.
So that's the homeowner's decision, they want.
Because.
I'm saying for Glenn. Obviously, we're gonna tell him we have a ten inch water main. It's at fifty five P S I.
So where we build our main. We have some control over. The flow behind that and the flow in front of that.
The only control we have is over the P S thousand, just fifty five, we don't have control or anything else.
Right, so I guess what I'm saying is if a homeowner decides to do a larger pipe size. We are still controlling the P S I at the main. I guess that's as much as we can. Right.
Yeah, we're gonna. They they've got a bigger pipe and they're gonna pay a lot more. So they wanna.
One inch.
They think they need an inch and a half or two inch. They're gonna pay for it.
And they're gonna pay the.
Access meter charge.
Yeah.
Then they're gonna pay forever. Yeah. Yeah. Until they realize they don't need the one inch. Yeah, so they redo it. But we will have that available, obviously, when. When someone purchases a property. They ask about, okay, well, what's what's the water main size? That's all that, so they'll know that, yes, we're putting in, we have one inch meters available. Who do you to put a one inch service line in? Uh not. Narrow it down to three quarters, but we also understand that that is how almost. A lot of this. Wrong with. They want a three quarter inch because they're gonna save.
Someone recommend.
I don't want, she'll be happy.
Yeah. All right, sorry, okay, so uh my motion. Yeah, any more discussion now that I have more discussion? Andrea, how to go?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
I will question. All right, thank you guys for the the good question. Action and discussion on internal local agreement for law enforcement services between purpose coming in with the branch, I'm so thankful that we have this.
No changes here as well as uh they did not ask for an increase in their contract price.
All right, nice. So glad you don't have to find additional. Can't say it.
On your mind.
Yes. Yes, yeah. On means.
A man's cast, that's kind of funny.
Was that?
That's right, right. A man's cast. Do you find some doctors, if you're ever curious about.
One minute, she doesn't ask.
Yeah, there was a grant that police.
Was. Was the what?
What was it?
Don't I remember. Non math. Some major. That's exactly right.
Our local. New city.
Big neighbor. Uh. Foster, Clyde Anderson, that was all city police.
Wow.
Yep.
I'm really thankful for.
That was back in the day when Jim was a kid.
Losing all three hundred of you. Let's get.
Um all takes that action a lot of their law, but then for the law enforcement services between Prince County and the city of. Second.
And more definitely second that we accept the inner local agreement between. Well, unfortunate, so it was in Prince County and the city of Grand Canyon discussion.
Good offer, there's.
Um, oh, yeah, good questions.
Name and offer is.
Okay, Terry, so the author is mayor. All right, and we second one. Any more discussion? Good catch. Terry, you have it up?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Sanders first stand. Motion. Richard, all right, action, discussion on resolution twenty four oh six oh one, resolution of the mayor. And council and city of Grant accepting the fair parade duties, you know, this is so.
Liability versus.
Right. Otherwise, we can't have a parade.
If I made another show.
They should have a parade, just lock down.
A parade.
Right, we would have to go like kids around and there's a different way.
Yeah, you're right, we could, we could have a parade without.
Solutions.
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve resolution twenty four oh six oh one, um. Resolution, one city of Grant to accept the fair parade duties.
Remove. Twenty second that we accept resolution twenty four oh six oh one. Accepting the fair parade duties, you mean? Discussion? Andrea, have you guys?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes, Tim?
Yes.
Motion. Thank you, guys. Yeah, I I think it may not be unpopular if you put the fair parade. Big diamond through town.
Yeah, I agree.
The session on employee compensation, this is just getting ready for um. Budget season, your Toronto kind of starts now. Looking at at numbers and. It would be that COLA and then also comparable community average adjustment. That has proposed for.
I hope this form works well, I think we used this in the past, uh. Sam gave me good feedback, I'll see the numbers, what's bottom line, what's the effect, how much more? So I can try to include that in there. Couple of, couple of changes were looking at, this will come up more, you know, obviously, I told you we're having some difficulties in that public, very public works position is primarily. A refuse truck driver. Personally was looking at some alternatives there and good solutions. So. We're we're looking at shaking things up a little bit, adding some more responsibility, the one individual and splitting out some of the parts, so. Some of the major changes there, um. More to come, we're researching now for the. Do we wanna talk about contracting our trash in this future? Um. I obviously need to get a bunch of numbers together, I am working on that. And hopeful that we can just find some more than that, so worry about that.
During this primary comes and and this was, I think, uh, an idea that. After talking to to a lot of council members. To contract out the trash since we can't find help. Um. We still have to keep that. Trash moving.
Yeah.
And and so, you know, if we can't find the employee, we need to seriously look about contracting now, even though I as a personal home resident. Wouldn't appreciate it, but I'm. Like my trash picked up, so.
Obviously, there's a lot more. Oh, some motion on that one, so.
Yeah.
Um and then. Just the caveat there that we would, we would still need that our individual. And they do more than drive the trash. Be doing. That should, they should be doing. You know, that we. We are falling behind on. You know, we said. We have the words that we like to clean. Not scam and cleaning. Yeah, there's, there's, there's some things that we need to get back on top of. A bird employee would certainly help.
Right in there. Right.
Um but uh but yeah, so just sort of your first look there, and I did include that's kind of a little. Comparison that you guys asked for about that was very helpful, um as well as most current. Cost of living, which is two point eight percent right now, um. We're doing.
And 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 I appreciate you also including other benefits that we offer, the holidays, the vacation days. And uh health insurance, so that gives us a better picture of what.
Obviously, we'll know more once we get closer to. The county is first. Evaluation goes, that allows. Where we work, so we. Kind of about there, we can kind of do that those parts, so. Yeah.
Right.
Half lack, is that short term disability, or is that, because I saw it, I was okay, is that short term? It's uh X L and.
Half lack is. Each individual chooses what they want and we're just. Passed through.
And so. Is is the individual paid for that, is the employees with the employee's?
Was not, was not. What happened with those plans?
It's evil.
That's out there. So we're short term. They have a short term disability, welfare. I said, we have the. She wants the, me as the employer and not paid the. That was one of the names I was wasn't sure about, it's not a matter of property.
Or just the bits that please said for it was for the. They all use this.
Sure.
It's.
Right, yeah, yeah, that's been.
Pretty good. Guys, uh if you like insurance.
So the other, you stop or maybe you only. They like briefs ass? Hey, well, stop that. Sure. Well, it's teaching benefit, I mean, you know, you have to be for yourself, you know, maybe a school question to ask if they offer that. Yeah, no, I know, I. Well, wired and. Yeah, it's probably they can't be.
Last time we kind of checked in with our staff, they referred to have those benefits as opposed to. A higher wage without those benefits, right? I know that the buy in the sky is increases the wages and keep the benefits, but I'm just curious, like that's. Not a switch that they would consider a win.
That's. I think they're probably great, right, now it's.
Enough.
It's very. However. It's very gracious about the benefits themselves, but.
Yeah, I always kind of ask them, I feel like we're, you are entering a generation of. Employees that are a bit more shortsighted in general, looking at what is my take on pay versus what are my benefits, so that we. Are continuing to try to play. Your total benefit game, so that's fine, but if your potential employee is not playing the same game. We're we're out of the loop, you know, so I just, I wanna make sure. We are competitive in the area that matters right now for potential hires. That I get, I get like a bit. Unfortunately, so it's not necessarily.
I I will say. Someone else change that. Since they.
Yeah.
Uh I think like really the peanut situation.
Yeah.
Maybe it's. Chris.
Yeah.
Uh but but. I don't think. That's a trend that is just just now starting to see this. Uh we'll see where, we're watching, it's like, well, can it change? Change, I quickly will let change, go step up, down, as quickly as they go up, we know this.
No, you never.
Now.
It sounds, and it was housing bust, probably two bucks worth, pointing them.
Yeah, yeah, looks like.
Went up and it came back down, but it only came down like here, but.
Really huge majority in your boys have this. Quite downs. The 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 benefits of health insurance and your page, I think it is the picture for keep our employees healthy and have.
Does we conduct the business for me? Or my life?
That's a lot of.
Okay. I I do have a question we can we sell. Uh. I would ask council members to give an initial grant pay to just. Consider. Two dollars. You know, it's just. All right. Yeah, I can't. Going to know all the about what's already right on here is a correct. Correct. Just one plus. Just and and the reading being. Been last one years, I see Jessica, I love her not. But. Any like right with you, the person with you. Keep getting that kind of trouble when it comes to the state. Just on the phone, making sure that. We. Over. And it just. Every year there's more and more, it's not right, it's here and there, it's like a. More. More while instead. Chips and. Keep going today and keep straight and. We need the. Those workers. Well, when we. You can do it immediately, but I I I presented it with. Yeah. Like the session, that's. Typically, they. Right, great. Those are my reasons. Um any other discussion on employee? Last day. If we're going to. Costs. All right. Discussion on capital improvements projects, I had asked the library to to send us the the budget um prior to, they didn't give it to us, but. It was very vague, um. That Ed get a little more firmer, like they said, the perfect may have been replaced about twenty years ago, we would like. So I need more information, what year was it replaced? Proximate cost, you know, kind of like what we have for our other capital outlay projects, so we do have some stuff that the library would like to, that I asked for them to give us. Um but it, there wasn't enough information there to to bring, you know, I don't think.
There was no hard, there was no ballpark risk, just that's my just like my library's placeholder. Asking my question. Plans to secure estimates weren't at least given.
And 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 was that not part of their budget the last couple of sites?
We have asked the last couple of struggles, yes.
Yeah, I don't know. Sorry, I.
Oh, maybe it was my.
And I know, seriously, I was.
I didn't hear.
And that's how good my hearing.
But that's.
Yours my ears.
No, trust me, I'm not. No, I'm down, this one's freaking it.
Really, I have, I thought flooring the perfect was part of their last. Budget cycle light items, so I just had never been able to. Be done with the budget.
The front circulation desk has been, I I don't know if I've I've seen flooring or. Carpeting on specific line item, but.
Just circulation better.
Okay, maybe that's what I was thinking of, okay.
I just got on there.
So just deeper, we think that they'll.
Well, they did have hard numbers in circulation desk, but. Well, they were also researching additional. It's like can the library foundation funds move, and they also didn't have a heart. Cause that's. Funny, it was hot.
Well, I know they did perfect. But in the community room, if I'm here. They didn't do the same library event.
That was part of a fundraiser for for perfect in there, so I mean. It was why I was on the uh. The foundation board, so I they they know they gotta have a a year that was redone because. I don't know.
So the the complete project for the circulation desk, they have four, which is fifteen, six, eight, two. I I know they were. They just need a, just like we said, just need a little more. Pretty good numbers for us and our stuff, you know, right as of today, it doesn't mean this one, what it's gonna be when it shifts, it might, it changes every two weeks, but that's. You know, that was, that was kind of one of the ways I'm for some capital, I think lighting. They were, they wanted to do some additional lighting upgrades, and I know the tile is cracked over by the bathrooms, uh so yeah, some stuff that, uh. It would be nice just to have a list, you know?
Mm hmm.
And you know what we, none of us.
Did we, did we send them like this list to say, for example, this is kind of the format we're looking for, and this is how we're considering those items, it might be helpful.
That that's a good idea.
I guess that's ballpark. 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 Frank, ballpark, Frank. Frank, ballpark, Frank. I just ask for ballpark numbers, uh, for us, and if they could be.
Okay.
Maybe give me a. That we needed to look like this.
Yeah.
I'll just take a copy in a while.
And and also if it if it could be, um, well, cause there was quite a bit, it was a long list, so if it also could be. Prioritized, you know, like kind of like a one in six.
Yeah, most would be real, but it's. Four items per department already, I'm like.
I I have to link to other departments, we you know, we say this, you're gonna do this, this, you're, and then next you're gonna do this, so I I mean. If if we can have some kind of.
I take it back, you were.
All right, as far as the capital's not my budget consideration. Here at the airport.
Big project there will be the Blue Hanger rehab construction, actually, this year we're doing, we're doing even engineering planning study. Uh, which has those and claims there. When we will get reimbursement from that, that's grants, and we still saying, my system, the airport. Hey, if we're gonna use our fuss, it's gonna happen, we want to actually. There's no more, there's no more pushing that one, otherwise we lose them, so.
Nina and I are trying to get a time to it together, we're introducing some facilities and stuff, we may not hit the.
And then the heart bits, the heart itself. Um, yeah, we're gonna use those ones too, so, uh, that that is an interesting, yeah, it's actually more than that. Cemetery, uh, this, this is one of those items that doesn't miss, it's not needed now, it's necessit- necessity.
Seventeen.
Necessity, necessarily, thank you. Um, however, been in talk with Mr. Kirkpatrick, and he said if you wanted to like get it, get it done.
Really, yeah.
I don't know.
It's gonna be works considered next year.
Yeah. Uh, CRA, obviously, that's that's our number, well, well, that number will change once we have the actual bids, right, so. Um. And so may the economic development law, so on and so forth. Um, electric, um, we're still in the process of converting our mercury bulbs to LED on the side streets. Uh, transformers, that's just a standard order, we've got to order, you know, two or three transformers every year, and then they take a year to get here.
Right.
Um, and I'm hoping that Spidey Chain can speed up a little bit, transformers are really clever in today. And Randy Schmidt, we're trying to test to that.
Yes, he can find one off.
Address signage on the brick column, I think I'm probably actually just gonna write, that was kind of one of those things I thought might look cool, but. I think I probably, it's probably gonna come off of there, my vision there was to have three forty-two central on the big corner post. And I was deciding, I was. You know, like the city of Grant is, it's the top. It's not a need. It's not a need. Um, the office computer is. I I I must.
Just because it.
Office computer in the world.
It burns off minimally on you, that's a problem.
Um, it is a problem, actually, I've got really good at saving, two seconds, I just go save, save, save. Um. Replacement of council chairs, like not only replace the ones faulty, but start things off on the ones too. Um, they're expensive, they're not cheap. I was blown away by how expensive these shoes are. Just for a piece of metal and. Some foam and thick leather. Thousand dollar.
You don't mean.
They don't need to be this fancy.
We were in them.
Sorry, maybe I'm thinking for the group, like I don't, we're in them twice a month, that's not where I would choose to spend taxpayer.
Well, we don't, and and again, these are, these are minor, actually.
I'd actually, I would update that to just on. I'm fine.
We share the chairs. We'll share a little statement.
Every meeting it moves down once.
One of my rotation.
Yeah.
I take that chair and move it over here, and then everything else slides.
He does it already, it's perfect.
So. Now, that just depends on who had the meeting before you, so cemetery board met before you, and they're like, oh, I don't want this chair, and then they moved it, now it's out of rotation, so. Uh, remainder of lottery funds, I'll have an accurate date on that ones. Based closer to budget time, again, remember, there's no, coming to no funds for that. But. You're actually like, you didn't have a lot of requests, so.
Yeah.
Um, parking rack. Uh, removing and replacing the wood planks with aluminum planks on the benches. Uh, this is an ongoing project, I'm hoping this is the last phase of that project.
Does this include the ones in front of the van shelter?
Van shell and the ones in front of the tennis floor, and the ones out of the park. I told you earlier that Danielle Koning, uh, Koning Craft Construction is going to be doing our interior painting on the van shell. Um, she's also going to be getting some numbers on renovating the benches.
Okay.
Turns out that was not a paint on there, it's actually, it's more of a rubberized. Coating. That's on there, that's what I told her.
We've painted them multiple times.
And it now has like a.
I painted them once.
Lots of layers, so it's like a rubber coating on that. Um, that that's a placeholder. Um, it's a ballpark figure that for that, it's it's needed, it's needed. Um, basketball court and tennis court resurfacing and fence, um, with. Everything we did at the ball fields, we were not gonna get the fence done at tennis court this year, but we will get that done next year.
Okay, good.
Um, again, that's needed. Um, both those restroom renovations are placeholder here, I know we talked a lot about this and maybe not moving. The new restrooms, um, and I heard you loud and clear on renovations, you know, let's. Let's get a fresh coat of paint, you know, floors, maybe new toilets in there. Uh, exterior paint. You know, a nice, nice metal roof on there. And so that's kind of where I started with, and what I thought maybe we we could put into it when it was all said and done. Um, I think it would probably be less than that, honestly. Um, that was a good starting point. Uh, based on those ideas, as well as the possible purchase of a maybe some border jobs.
Hmm, yeah.
So. Uh, just a good placeholder for that. Um. A- another pla- placeholder here, uh, you you notice at the top it says and future. And future, um, so new playground to replace the wooden structure, I think I mentioned this before. I've actually talked to Don Softly, and he's also in agreement that it has served its best life. If you don't know, that was a donation from the Softly family. And and, uh, very gracious donation, and very appreciative of that donation, but it's, it served its best life, and I know the insurance. Has said chimed in a time or two on that one, so we're doing our best to to mitigate the stutters and the. And the missing bolts and all of that, trying to put hardware in.
I'm wondering if it's time to just take it down.
And that might be our first step, is actually the actual removal, um.
I think it's a good, yes, parts here.
And and they do have the, like, like, similar to what we did at the, uh. Ball fields, you know, with the Jade donation, she was able to get, uh. Fifty percent matching, so not one hundred, one to one, two to one match on that, we're able to capitalize, she was able to capitalize on that, get a bigger. Structure for less money. Uh, and to put that in a reference, once it actually enters place, um. We're we're open before fair, but there was no guarantees there either. Um, we're at the whim of Creative Sites and their installation company, um, but once you guys see it, uh, that was, that's sixty thousand dollars structured. So I'm getting kind of gauge off of that where we're, where we need to be for that replacement of that, it'll be a toddler structure, cause that's kind of what it was, it's a. Underage structure, not a, it gets, you know, the twenty-four foot slide wraps around, so. Um.
I think we need a pirate one, that's the third structure though.
Right there.
Pirate.
Three independent.
Structure, yeah, yeah, it's, yeah, it's the one that has like this rickety bridge. My girls pretended it was a pirate ship.
Yeah.
They have, it was their favorite one, and they were there when that other one was like brand new.
Well, you're in luck, because Creative Sites can do basically anything you want, Spirit Engine, DHC, Pirate. You name it.
We need pirates, right now that's.
You 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 name it, they have all kinds of designs with all kinds of themes. Um, and then the ball for their, obviously. I have a question mark there. Until I know it's not.
My dream is a splash pad, you gotta put that like in a, like a.
It's around.
It's not eighty-six yet, not eighty-six.
It's not here, it's not here.
Uh, hopefully I have some firm numbers that other about the ball. If they wanna.
But if.
This purchase it or or whatever.
But that does just bring your point, like, if we want three independent play structures in the park, we're gonna spend some money. What do we put there? But I think base one is taking down.
Yeah.
And then it's the splinter giver, as I like to call it.
Well, I could, you know, three, three, so you see what they want, you know, I mean, cause. Splash pad would be fun.
Sure.
Sure. Still, I'll pay for it, I mean, you know, I'll go on to the rest for it.
Oh, sure. Well, cause my concern is, and and this is just coming from someone who never got to the pool, she couldn't afford it. And I know there are plenty of people in town. Who can't go to pool, not because. They don't want to, it's because they can't afford the pool.
Yeah.
And I was one of those families growing up and. A splash pad. Would be cool, plus it's, it could be open a little longer than.
Yeah.
Than it pulls, and it could just be a a small. Small pirate thing.
The good news is a lot of communities have splash pads around us, so I have plenty of the. Um, and then sewer, um. See, we're talking about the new subdivision there, and then the sewer main camera and cleaning, you know, a couple thousand there, so it's possibly increased. Flat here, um. Um. Then you'll see a new one on there, so, and planning for the replacement of one of our pickups, we want to use the salt spreader. Um, we're gonna need a bigger pickup, I do not think it needs to be a new pickup, because it's not, it's not thinking of it, it's used on a daily basis. Um, therefore, since you see the word used in there, and I haven't, already have one, look. You see, hanging out by Woody's or not. Um, I've contacted them, and they are very interested, do not sell that pickups.
I definitely think we need a salt spreader.
Yeah.
I mean, not ever here, hopefully.
So, it's something to think about there in weeks. Before sewer streets or whatever, but we would outfit it with wood tools in the event that we needed to have two. Pickups available for that purpose, we could, it would also house the skeeter fogger as well, it's a big, maybe a spread. About which. This Friday gets reconsidered, you start that season. My favorite season. Um, crack salt, crack, crack salt, um, track sealing and asphalt patching, I should put those two words together. Uh, that's our normal, um, there, um, intersection improvement at six and Lincoln is next on our list. Um, but we will obviously talk about that when we talk about one at six, you know, that's the. Logical place to go there. And that's probably the the next worst intersection to improve. Um, that's why I standing most of the way there. Yeah, so. Um, proven gutter improvements are standard in there, sidewalk improvements, I talked to you about the sidewalk plan. We haven't started the survey yet, cause I don't have a map yet, back from TC Engineering, uh, once you do that. That survey will come this week, on some swap improvements, case that puts the key power. So what they want to see there, still drink, painting and camera, this is gonna be in this year, what I do. We started it this year. There's a lot of. Very special. What we do is give them. Simple dress, hundred dollars, but they charge us hourly rate, that's not wrong. So, using track, if you could stop, it's just not, you know. Something over the learning. It's much one third, big up their waste industries, I did a little bit more there too, because cost of steel was not up. Higher, you think of the bottom layer conversation, so. Or I can. But on second. Addups to addups, addups, not addups, hey. This day, we owned the whole street, and now we have a big wires to the south. Persons don't like the settling of it, because it's low, lower the cost for that. It just, it goes there, and then just drop the lines underneath. Which is the whole thing, so that that's not wish list, it's it's just, it's bore that down. So thirty-six. So, those are transmissions. That's the reason they were not done. Our high voltage transmission. Uh, so. Okay, get me done, alright. I apologize. Okay. You agree. Right here. Everything else was what they call, so it's basically just carrying a hundred. Is what it's, it's not carrying. All right, then, the very, wait a minute, it's not, out there downy, they buried, buried a lot. They buried it, there's on top and down below it, county, they buried that. We're, we're talking about the 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 line, the main line. I was clever, but. Okay.
I'm not blowing the city.
At least. Uh. Didn't you, what could get here? Other street last year, another street, another street, the side streets. Going south. Uh, and then on water there, obviously, giving out rain. Out of the ordinary, again, push the start there, and just. Obviously, some of the structure have changed. Uh, definitely I helped you. Ballpark, they hear the drugs, of course.
Do you wanna research that, the removal of that? For the.
Yeah, yeah, I can get it. Specialists, I think.
Yeah. I mean, cause it's public cost water, your neighbor in the hall. Where the insurance.
It's like that box.
Yeah. Right.
Recirculates the water, so it's like a water as an inner system. Um, or. It's still writing this. Basically, basically just running the water out of the ground. And you lose.
When we looked at on a board, this was. The recirculating out of twenty years, twenty about possible.
They're more expensive. It's not that loose.
It's a bit loose, because they're.
Now, that's what I put in a.
I can start selling energy drinks.
Anyways, that was not on the agenda, moving on.
Alright.
Oh, wait, wait, you can.
Okay. Yeah, not like that.
Any other ideas we could put on here, I mean. You know, we can even, maybe like the dream list. Uh, a to do list for Edward.
So once we take the parts down, I mean, one thing we haven't talked about is. There's not a congruent sidewalk around the park, so like a walking path. There's just the, is it the alleyway only that's really missing, and then that's like the drive through. And I wonder, can we use any parts, like a green space, walking trail fund to maybe. Do a walking trail park.
That's, that's part of the charge that TC Engineering has, identifying those missing areas.
Yeah, cause there's, so then I wonder, if like we take the, if we take the playground down, you have two others, do you have, look at maybe like a calistics. Something or another there instead of playground, so then. It might be a grand, if a walking.
Those old rock wall, they look like those things are just like, those, they have pipes to match, look like they usually found each other.
Yeah.
So, so an adult structure is what you're.
Maybe. Just thought.
It's a, the new one gonna have a climbing hall. I couldn't remember, cause I know some of the communities have just.
With the new one. Ball fields, and then that's. Where we, playground owners, we can just think about different ways to spend that money, potentially. What do we not have there?
Right, that's a good idea, something uh, adult oriented, cause. I I remember when I took kids to the park, I would like incorporate my exercise at the park.
Yeah.
Equipment for that.
Yeah, that's like the music people probably do.
Yeah, they do, they have the exercise kind of equipment.
And I just think it's, well, it's a maybe for that winter with the climate. As far as what's available for gatching.
Okay.
Sunster, or I think they call it play, or. I think it's called play equipment.
I didn't create a science test.
Yeah.
Well, I did, and he was pretty pumped about that, then he, that died off when he went to the cemetery, so.
Anyway, make two cents.
What's, what's that? That's our, our dreams most.
Don't put it in a circular pile.
We just blew up my never ending list.
What are we doing with that rock wall, it's breaking that circular walk wall, what are we gonna do with that?
That's, that's a historical situation.
Uh, you talking about the planter, or?
There's several, the one that used to be.
Be a thousands northwest.
And then there's the circular one.
Yeah, it's not like those fountain, so where the planters goes.
No, 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 it's a, it's.
Yeah, by the tennis courts, yeah, by tennis courts, yeah, I saw.
Fountain, wasn't it, or something, like the one closer to the pool, that's like on the hill.
Remember the van shell was.
You're gonna put like a wrong Reagan statue in the middle of the area, what we do it.
So there's two planters.
Yeah, those are all.
That is historic though.
What the, the stuff, it's kind of fall apart, this store, so. To fix that, you have to get a person that is qualified, right?
Yeah, and they have to be. They have to be registered with the state to work on that specific.
If you're going to.
If you're gonna restore it, you know, you can remove it and and lose the historical designation.
So by law, can we just remove it?
Yeah. You can lose, you can remove it, but you're gonna lose the historical designation.
But what's that, what's that lose us? Is it?
Nostalgia. Uh, but it's breaking down, I mean, if you get, I mean, it's just one part, we can't fix it, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
It's not fine, if it's gonna make, it's gonna look nice, we turn it into an old planter, you're gonna make it, you're gonna. Or it's a fountain, but it's such a brown wall or a rock wall that's falling apart, you know.
But the safety hazard that plus this insurance money.
That's circular like a splash pad, I'm just, you know. Well, I mean, I I mean, I, you know, I think if it's gonna look nice. It's just gonna fall apart, we can't fight it, and we can't fix it, then.
And that.
It's in their design.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's sort of what we circled as, as the tree board was talking about, what to do with that, cause they wanted flowers in it. It's not really flower friendly.
Next.
Doug Tatum has been taking care of it, removing the trees that are growing out of it.
Okay.
Um, the idea I proposed to them was to. To get some stuff together to present to city council for. Re, not re, we have to, we have to remove it to do it correctly. By the creative, uh. Veterans don't want. Something with, you know, someone, you know, pray, soldier on praying knee. Something cool there. I mean, Imperial did did something very similar to that, very nice.
It's a good idea.
I mean, it really, really wouldn't have to change the footprint of it, you know, you can still keep the circular aspect of it. Um, and and the remaining sidewalk around it, I mean, it's.
I think here's who, what the offensive term, if you were paying, see, it's a separate reason. Let's get out your leg door, you can do like there too, just. Yeah, but we do have a memorial already on. And I can have two, I just.
Alright, we're ready to move on to building claims, everyone get a chance to look at building.
Yes.
Yeah. Wanna know that everyone looked at building. And then check, so those are claims in a two hundred and fifteen thousand five ninety seven twenty eight.
Second.
Except building claims in amount of two hundred and fifteen thousand five hundred ninety seven dollars and twenty eight cents. Any discussion? Sam, how do you go?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Motion period. We are adjourned at eight thirty three. Thank you, everyone.